Welcome to the July ninth, twenty twenty four City Council Work Session. I would love like to now turn it over to City Manager Benda to walk us through the Agenda Overview.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. I pray that everyone had a wonderful July Fourth holiday. It was pretty eventful in that our Hillcats, I don't know that they were successful in their baseball games, but they're competing against Delmarva this week and they had wonderful fireworks at their stadium. The city itself shot some off on Friday and the park and the area near the water was pretty well attended. Thank you to the Downtown Lynchburg Association and all associated city staff that helped kind of coordinate in and out of town, our public safety officials and what have you. So pretty awesome and I hope that everyone had a great holiday weekend. With that, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, this afternoon during our work session, we have an opportunity to talk about two of our important assets, the airport, Lynchburg Regional Airport. We have Andrew Legala here that's going to talk to us about exciting news about expanded and that means augmented service before anyone jumps ahead. Andrew, did I do okay? Okay, I hope so. And then what's a museum refresh? Ted's here, he does a magnificent job with our museum, but there are some new things that are going up there, on up there that I, I think our public and you should know about that makes it one of our most visited assets in the city, very, very exciting. And last of which, we've had quite a bit of conversation recently about conditional use permits and some other things, art, businesses and others on Fifth Street. I have Tom Martin, because I often call him Tom White, but Tom Martin, our Community Development Director, who's been a part of that conversation from maybe even its inception, that will talk to you about how, how that is, what it is and what it has meant. And then business side and briefings, those are those things that come before you that at an impending meeting you vote upon. We have a couple of briefings on those and then also a closed session. With that, Mayor, I turn it back to you.
Thank you much, sir. All right, we'll start off with our work session Agenda items. The Lynchburg Regional Airport Air Service Update, Mr. Andrew Legala.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Airport's Air Service Update today. I've got a handful of slides I want to touch on and basically just go over where we were, where we are, and kind of moving forward where we're going. So as you recall, and back in nineteen, we hit our highest passenger traffic of one hundred eighty-five thousand passengers, which was the first time in ten years, back then, of course, in nineteen. And then as we encountered the pandemic and how it devastated the airlines and airport industry, all flight levels, of course, went down dramatically. So our airline service levels and passenger traffic have improved substantially since the April lows of twenty twenty, which was about eight hundred and thirty-seven passengers, which is incredibly low from what we're ever used to. Going through twenty-one through twenty-three, our passengers gradually began rebounding as we talked about over the past couple of years, as we saw schedules gradually increase both in frequency and capacity. So with that, on our current outlook, our scheduled seats increased as the spring travel demand returned this year. In May, we added a fifth flight, which was exciting for the airport. It was five days a week for the entire month, which gave us about seventy-eight hundred scheduled seats. A big improvement there over what we've seen over the past year or two. And domestic leisure demand, advanced bookings continue to strengthen through twenty-four. I say that because Americans' twenty-four schedules do reflect seasonal variations right now. One thing to point out is passenger loads factors peaked in February at close to ninety-one percent, which is incredibly high and I'll show you that here in a chart momentarily. With that, local domestic business system-wide demand stabilized with an increase in twenty-four. And of course, as we all know, international passenger demand continues to grow system-wide. So with that, I just want to point your attention here to the graph on our monthly load factors and really just your attention on the bottom line there. That blue line in nineteen was where our passenger loads were when we were at seven flights a day, a mix of aircraft. And we were hovering at seventy-six to eighty percent and the airline was very pleased with that, as you can tell, because they gave us those flights right before the pandemic. And then you can see how we recovered there in twenty-two, twenty-three. Our passenger loads were well above those numbers and now in twenty-four, we're still as strong, as I showed, pointed there in February, ninety-point-seven. We continue to show really strong monthly load factors and American has noted that and more to come here in a second with that. So our scheduled departures, with that, you'll see in nineteen on that top line there how we had a lot of departures. Of course, we had the seven flights, the mix of aircraft. We were averaging one hundred and seventy, one hundred and eighty, two hundred flights a month. What's important here on this slide here is look at our black line in twenty-four, how we're showing going into July and August without burying the lead, well over two hundred and six flights for the month, but we'll talk about that here shortly. Total passengers for the month, so when you take both of those together and you start blending in what the total passengers are for the month, you'll see in nineteen, we were hovering pretty high there on that top line. But what I wanted to show you is the twenty-four line, how we're back there. And you'll see going into, I'm very, very optimistic in July, August and September, we will see those numbers be in the fifteen thousand range. Very optimistic to see that, especially with the amount of flights that we're looking to be getting here shortly. So with that, oh, real quick, I want to touch on, what's very important for us too is making sure we track our, our fares, because our fares are very important. Of course, we have airports north of us and south of us that are larger and have more flights, more seats, better fares. But it's important that we keep a track on that and I really keep on coordination with American. And you can see there, we're always within twenty dollars or so on our fare comparison with significantly less seats than we do at our airports nearby, so. Okay, so upcoming flight schedules, I talked about the spring. I do want to touch on this summer and the fall schedules as we reflect a notable increase. So scheduled seats are going to increase to six daily, which is now both in June and July. So we have six daily flights most days. The big thing to note for today's discussion is August through September, we're back up to seven flights. So that was a big, huge milestone. For most days, that's given us well over ten thousand three hundred scheduled seats. So very pleased to report that. With that, of course, winter will return to six daily, most days, of course, due to seasonal trends and during the seasons, especially after the holiday and we're into January, it's normal to go down to six daily. So August seat capacity does exceed pre-pandemic levels with twenty-six more scheduled flights than we had in nineteen. So that's where we are right now. Looking forward, a couple of things I do want to touch on looking forward. You know, we do meet with our regional business partners and it includes ongoing conversations with major employers. I will mention here, our City Manager did a fantastic job getting four of our large corporations in the room together and discussing what it looks like for additional incentives. As you all recall, we had the SCASD grant from DOT at six hundred thousand and City Council graciously matched that with four hundred thousand for American for a million dollar incentive plan for American to go to Chicago. But with that, he also was able to work with our business partners to also give us some seed money, depending on what the new airline or new destination would be. No promises, of course, but that's just, just make that clear. But I want to say that because we have well over now a million dollars, a million plus, and the plus is dependent on what the destination is and of course, who the airline or whatever that would be. But with that said, that just gives me a really strong story to tell when I do my air service development at and meet with the airlines. Recently, I went to Scottsdale and we met with a handful of airlines and they were real pleased to hear about that incentive packages that we have. And then just recently, a month or two ago, I came back from DC to meet with some airlines. So I keep continuously ongoing air service development meetings throughout the year to gain additional destinations and carriers. So that's what we're doing going forward. And then, of course, another thing that's real important too is the airport continues to be a strong community partner, both economic and in workforce development. And you know, we're very involved in the community, as you all know and you see, and you can see there on the bottom there, we've got some pics of our D-Day aerial demonstration, of course, our five K runway run, we do love that. And then of recent, we actually started an Aviation Day at the library with the children and we read to the children and they were able to take airport books home with them. So with that, that does conclude my presentation. Thank you for your time and answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Legala. Any questions or comments? Well, this is very exciting and thank you for all your hard work. It's wonderful to see that our numbers are rising. I know that's something you've been really working hard on and I just appreciate all the work that you and your staff are doing and keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to the museum refresh and exhibits from Mr. Ted Delaney. I will tell you all that I had a great idea when I saw Mr. Delaney that we should have a night at the museum for adults. And I said, listen Ted, you wouldn't, it wouldn't be too bad because all of us would be asleep by ten. So, but we would demand therapeutic style sleeping bags. So there are some accommodations that would have to be made. I think it's a great idea, fundraiser of sorts.
I love it.
Right? Okay, we'll talk about it later, but go ahead.
I love it, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
So good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. The Lynchburg Museum System, which is our city's official history museum and archives, is almost fifty years old. We will celebrate our semi-centennial anniversary, a little over a year from now, in the year twenty-twenty-six. And we want to share with you this afternoon some exciting things that are happening at the museum as we approach this milestone. So the museum system, you may know, was created as a signature project of the city's bicentennial, national bicentennial in nineteen seventy-six. The first ever paid professional museum staff member in the city of Lynchburg was hired in the fall of nineteen seventy-six. That was Tom Ledford and the museum has grown ever since then over those fifty years. The museum system officially opened to the public four years after the seventy-sixth initiative in nineteen eighty, after several years of meticulous restoration of the courthouse itself. The project was led by Richard Gifford, Vice President at GE, and a beloved civic leader who is pictured in the photo center-left at the podium there at the ceremony. That was July fourth, nineteen seventy-six, kicking off the restoration of the courthouse. And I want to call your attention to the condition of the paint on the columns. That shows you how badly and disrepaired the building was when this project was taken on. Today, there are two official sites in our museum system. There have been other sites in the past. The Academy Music was at one time in the museum system, as was the Miller-Clater House. But today, we just have two, the Lynchburg Museum in the Old Courthouse on Court Street and the Point of Honor Historic Site in Daniel's Hill. In two thousand twenty-one, the Lynchburg Visitor Center was co-located inside the entrance hall of the museum to reduce duplication of city services and to improve the visitor experience. And now visitors start their visit inside one of its best attractions when they come to visit. We also have special partnerships with Monument Terrace right in front of our museum and the Quaker Meeting House on Fort Avenue. There are over one hundred thousand items in our permanent collection, ranging from paleolithic by points that were found in Campbell County to the first glass vial of the COVID-nineteen vaccine that was administered at Lynchburg General Hospital in twenty-twenty and everything you can imagine in between, connected to significant people, places and events in local history. I'm especially proud to remind everyone that we have the only professionally-trained history museum curator in Virginia between Richmond and Roanoke, Charlottesville and Greensboro. The only history museum curator between Richmond and Roanoke, Charlottesville and Greensboro. In celebration of our fiftieth anniversary, we have begun a multi-phase campaign to upgrade and update the Lynchburg Museum at the Old Courthouse for the next fifty years to get us to twenty-seventy-six. Our overall goal is to make the museum reflect the hospitality and charm of the hill city and make it, and make the best possible first impression on visitors to the site. Phase one, which was completed on June seventh, was focused on the Court Street entry pictured here. It was designed to convey a warm welcome to the thousands of visitors who come from around the world every year and start their visit at our museum. We rolled out the red carpet for visitors on the evening of June seventh, which was June first Fridays, coinciding with the opening of our new D-Day exhibit. We made the Court Street entrance more inviting and welcoming by installing new vertical banners between the columns on the facade. We added four large planters on the portico with boxwood and colorful annuals planted in them. We installed an outdoor carpet runner and we placed four new outdoor rocking chairs on the portico for visitors who, like all of us, need a break sometimes after you've come up Monument Terrace, all hundred and forty, all hundred and forty steps, but a much welcome break. We also increased our open days, going from being open five days a week to six days a week. So we're now open on Tuesdays and we began that in mid-June. Phase two of this campaign is a new and improved ADA-compliant rear entrance to the museum. This is the current rear entrance on Ninth Street. The design of this project has just been completed by CGMW Architecture of Lynchburg. It includes a new ramp from the Clay Street parking deck nearby, glass entry doors, planters to match those on the front, and improved signage to direct visitors from the front of the museum to the back as needed. This project is now in the procurement stage and we expect completion to be completed in October or November of this year. We have more hopes and dreams for the museum. We hope to install new permanent orientation exhibits in the entrance hall. The last time that exhibit was redesigned and changed substantially was two thousand and eight. So we're approaching twenty years now. And we want to update it not only to include new artifacts and new history we've learned, but also to integrate more twenty-first century technology into that exhibit. I'm pleased to report that we have received a generous donation from the estate of Lucy Woodall Harris, of fifty thousand dollars designated specifically for this project. So we have a good start already. We'd like to renovate our very humble gift shop, which is now in the museum's entrance hall, expanding it and upgrading it to offer more items and helping us to generate more revenue for the museum. And lastly, we'd like to renovate our public restrooms, which are largely unchanged from the original nineteen seventies restoration. Ultimately, we want to make our restrooms match the same level of warmth and welcome as the new entrances and updated galleries at the museum. I mentioned a moment ago that D-Day exhibit, this was opened on June seventh in honor of the eightieth anniversary of D-Day. And our entrance hall now features the small exhibit about that invasion of June nineteen forty-four and the local men who served in that pivotal campaign of World War Two, as well as the women and families here at Lynchburg. Artifacts include several Purple Hearts that were earned during D-Day, a B-seventeen bomber pilot's flight jacket from the nineteen forties, and even a metal-clad bulletproof pocket Bible from Luther Moser of the Moser Furniture Family here in Lynchburg. The museum's D-Day exhibit will be on display for the remainder of the month through June thirtieth. Our current exhibit, our largest exhibit upstairs at the museum is Women with Women. It's about the history of mid-whiffery in Lynchburg and central Virginia. It chronicles the history of that profession in our area, including the fascinating stories of women like African-American midwife Harriet Burton, who could neither read nor write, but was responsible for attending four times more births than any other local midwife in her day, including children of all races. This will be on display into early twenty-twenty-five. We have several upcoming exhibits that I'm pleased to announce. The first is about the Virginia Tenmiler, which you may know, this beloved footrace is celebrating its fiftieth anniversary this fall in September. We have great photographs to share from the fifty years of the race, as well as great memorabilia, T-shirts and something called the Bland Bell, a bell that, a cowbell that was rung at a certain point on the race in honor of somebody. The exhibit opens August second. You all are invited for that first Friday's opening and will be, will remain on display at the museum through September. Our next exhibit that follows that will be about the Cold War in Lynchburg, from the end of, focusing on the period from the end of World War Two in nineteen forty-five to the fall of the Soviet Union in nineteen ninety-one. We're focusing on local civil defense efforts, local fallout shelters. And as a matter of fact, there was a fallout shelter in the basin of this building, as well as the nuclear R and D that was conducted right here in Lynchburg through Babcock and Wilcox. And lastly, our next major exhibit at the museum that's in the works is about Lynchburg's experience in the Vietnam War. Next year will be the fiftieth anniversary of the fall of Saigon, which many people consider to be an unofficial end to that conflict. If you or anybody watching has any Vietnam-related artifacts related to local families or people that you might be interested in lending, please let me know, let us know at the museum, we'd love to talk to you. Great things are happening at the Lynchburg Museum. It is still the best place to start your visit of Lynchburg or to bring out-of-town guests who you want to show off the best of our city. Visitors can learn about our unique history and culture and we can also help them plan a memorable experience of the other attractions, entertainment, dining and outdoor recreation here. The public is always invited to visit us Thursday through Tuesday, so that's every day except Wednesday, ten AM to four PM and on Sundays, noon to four PM. Admission to the museum is always free and we are, as always, very grateful for your support. So that concludes my presentation unless there are any other questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Delaney. Any questions or comments from Council? Okay, well, we'll be following up with you about our special.
Night at the Museum?
Night at the Museum for the grownups.
Luxury sleeping bag.
Luxury sleeping bags and thank you again, appreciate it. Okay, moving on to the Fifth Street Corridor Revitalization, Revitalization with Mr. Tom Martin, Mr. Benda. And I believe it was your birthday a day or two ago.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, happy birthday. Congratulations, you did it.
Yes, for another fifty-three.
We celebrate.
You know, interestingly enough, I did a night at the museum with Cub Scouts and they wouldn't turn the lights off. It's not a lot of fun, no sleep.
Okay, well, we'll make a note for Mr. Delaney that we will turn the lights off. We have to have some lighting on the feet, on, on the bottom, so that we can all make it to the bathroom because you know, that'll be a problem for our age, but it's fine, it's fine. Thank you for being here, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of, Members of Council. Thank you for letting me be here and discuss this with you. I'd like to briefly discuss with you the Fifth Street Corridor Master Plan and the revitalization efforts that have been undertaking the corridor. As the manager pointed out, I have been involved with these efforts since its inception, but take no credit for the successes that we are going to discuss today. They really belong to past, current councils, a lot of other city staff and very dedicated private individuals, some of those who have gone on before us, like Mr. Walter For and Mr. Eddie Claiborne, who were instrumental in helping to get us where we are today. So the, the plan provides a vision for Fifth Street and has been instrumental in achieving the vision of rehabilitation and rehabilitation of the area that really helps us achieve that vision. So the vision is a beautiful business center and a beautiful setting, surrounded by attractive, safe and diverse neighborhoods. By honoring the planned goals that you see on the, the screen, Fifth Street is no longer in the point of decline that it was from the nineteen sixties up until the, the mid-two thousands. And there's a lot of reasons for that decline, but it's, it's just important to say that it had got to a point where the city took interest in doing something. The Fifth Street Master Plan was adopted in May of two thousand and six, but interestingly enough, the interest in revitalizing it actually goes back to two thousand when council appointed a, an interim Fifth Street Steering Committee, which led to the, the development of the Fifth Street Community Development Corporation that still exists today and is very instrumental in advocating for redevelopment of Fifth Street. So since the, the plan's adoption, the city has taken very deliberate steps towards implementation of the plan. In two thousand and seven, the area was rezoned and a Fifth Street corridor revitalization overlay district was put in place really to promote appropriate mixed-use infill that would help achieve the vision that was outlined in, in the plan. And just to point out that that was a community grassroots-driven vision that was developed for, for the neighborhood. Moving on to December of twenty-eleven and February of twenty-twelve, the properties were listed on the Virginia Landmarks Register and the National Register of Historic Places. And this really gives property owners access to rehabilitative tax credits if they do choose to use those. And that ran from really the mid-block of Taylor Street all the way down to Court Street, which was already downtown and those historic districts were already in the local and national districts. So moving on with deliberate implementation of the plan, starting in two thousand and nine, the city embarked on phases of improvements, not only to the streetscaping, but also to the water and sewer infrastructure. Don't know if, well, you probably were, but the raw water line coming in from Petler Reservoir comes all the way up Fifth Street and that was improved or replaced. So there was a lot of work that went on underground as well as above ground and we were able to really leverage and pool resources in, in order to make the redevelopment happen. So that happened over three phases and phase four, which will start in the summer of next year, is really just a street rebuild. It's not going to have the same features as the other streetscape, but it will be repairing failing retaining walls and sidewalks. If, if you drive down that portion from Taylor towards the Dr. Martin Luther King Memorial Bridge, you'll see retaining walls that are about ready to fall out into the street and they need to be corrected and improved. So moving on, when we did the plan, long-term residents of Fifth Street really talked about how it was a, they had fond memories of Fifth Street, how it was a vibrant commercial area. It was, it supported the activity of the surrounding neighborhoods. I believe a quote in the plan was, it was a place to see and be seen. And it was really the And it was really the, it was the hub for African-American business. As we can see in this photo taken right before plan implementation started, those were just memories. So, you can see that that's a fairly desolate stretch of Fifth Street. Moving on, however, through planning and implementation of that plan, both public and private investment, we can see that the vision of that plan is being achieved. That area has been transformed and will continue to be transformed, provided that we continue to follow the plan. Again, the vision is a beautiful setting of rehabilitated and new buildings with complementary streetscape, surrounded by safe and attractive neighborhoods, and I think that photo shows what can be achieved when we stick to implementing the plan the way it was designed. So, there's been significant public and private investment in this neighborhood. For the improvements that we've done, everything from water and sewer lines to streetscaping to statues, we've invested about $11.4 million. Private investment, $18.1 million. Notable, notable things is the Gish Apartments, which is 66 units down at Court Street. That was a new building, and the renovation, I believe it was of a hosiery mill. The Court Street Townhouses, which are 13 townhouse units also on Court Street. The Community Action Center at Fifth and Federal, which was the former Adams Motors Display Lot, Family Dollar. And I know that that has recently closed due to, for whatever reasons, but I've been thinking about it a lot, and I refuse to dwell on negatives and see it as opportunities. So, I think we can only move forward with what the work that we've been doing. Speaking to the plan's success, the assessments from when we adopted the plan till today have increased by $23.6 million on Fifth Street. In 2006, the total assessment of that area was right around, right around $7 million. So now we're about $31 million. So the plan is working. Also notable, we have the Refith Street Co.-workspace at 43 Fifth Street. Interestingly enough, that was an auto body collision center that was converted into co-workspace. That was assessed at about $300,000 at first, and now it's assessed at a little over $1.5 million, and that's because of adhering to the plan, implementing the plan. There are also great things, new businesses on the horizon. We have the open, the Easy Speak Dance Hall and Events opened, as well as Primm, and I had to look up what Primm is, but it's, deals with houseplants and care and accessories for them, which I try to keep my wife away from houseplants. Hope she's not listening. Also, on the horizon, El Camino, I believe, is talking about going in the former Grays, the yard on Fifth Street at Fifth and Federal. We're looking forward to that opening, as well as others. We, the Roads to Recovery Center is, I believe that's going to be opening in the fall of this year, which is very important for our community, as well as the Humble Building, which is at 901 Fifth Street, directly adjacent to Adams, the former Adams Motors property, has submitted a permit for rehabilitation for a commercial residential. That permit is listed at $1.5 million. So there is significant investment that is occurring because of the steps that this, hopefully this council will take, past councils' investment that has been made, both publicly and privately. So, in closing, again, the city has taken very deliberate steps to revitalize this corridor. There's been significant public and private investment, and the plan efforts are working, and I believe that Fifth Street will continue to have a very bright future. So, thank you, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. That is super helpful for me, maybe some of the other newer members of council, certainly for me, because I don't have all that history from 23, 24 years ago. So, and it's so exciting to see how it's come so far, and again, how the, you know, following the plan and its development, and how beautiful it is down on Fifth Street, and to see the investments paying off. So, really well done, and that's very exciting. Does anybody have any questions, or yes, Dr. Wilder?
In the community, I was so excited to be from Lynchburg and see the transformation, how at one point it got really kind of dilapidated, some of the buildings, and now to see it come back to life, it's so impressive. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Vice Mayor for all?
Received any interest in the Family Dollar that you mentioned?
I have not yet, but I do plan on talking with our economic development folks. They're much better at recruiting than I am.
Sure. I know, Councilman, I whispered it over to them, but just so everyone's aware, yeah, I know there, there's a desire for White Rock to receive some form of a grocery store, but if that's a possibility to at least consider in this location, that might be worthwhile, although I want to honor, of course, his desire for White Rock, but it is a, it is a food desert area, and that infrastructure is right there.
Yeah, that was actually one of the good, the reasons that we kind of embraced the Family Dollar, because they did sell some food, milk, eggs, that kind of stuff, but a grocery store is something that's been asked for for a very long time. Yes.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, moving on to our business item briefings. Rezoning our three medium-density residential districts to our four C high-density residential district conditional to allow 48 duplex, quadplex, and townhouse-style residential units at 1015 and 1019 Pinehurst Street. This item will appear before council for action on August 13, 2024. Ms. Rachel Fresh Heisen.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. The, these two properties total approximately 5.84 acres and are currently undeveloped. The existing R3 medium-density residential zoning was established in 1978. The purpose of the rezoning is to allow the construction of a 48-unit residential development by Rush Homes, which includes an associated parking area and a resident community center. The units would consist of two duplex-style buildings, one quadplex building, and 40 townhouse-style units. The future land use map recommends a medium-density residential use for the area. These areas are characterized by smaller lot, single-family detached housing, duplexes, and townhomes at densities of 212 units per acre. In addition to residential uses, these areas may include public or institutional uses that are compatible in scale with surrounding neighborhoods. The voluntarily submitted proffers indicate that access to Phase One of the development, consisting of eight units, which are indicated by the dash line that you see on the plan here, would be taken from Pinehurst Street, and that access would be gated and used for emergency access only once the main entrance from Florida Avenue is constructed for Phase Two. Residents and visitors will then use the Florida Avenue entrance moving forward. The proposed rezoning would facilitate the construction of a residential development at a density of up to approximately 8.2 dwelling units per acre. For comparison, the current R3 zoning would allow 10.89 units per acre, and the future land use map recommends up to 12 units per acre. Therefore, the proffered maximum density of 48 units should have less impact than if the property were to be developed at its buyright maximum density. The proffers regarding access to the site will result in a safe ingress and egress for residents and visitors to the proposed development from Florida Avenue. The neighboring homes on Pinehurst Street should experience limited impact since the access from that street will be closed after Phase One is complete, and all daily traffic will use the Florida Avenue entrance going forward. One thing to note initially, and as mentioned in your planning commission report, Rush Homes had planned for all duplex and townhouse-style units. Planning and engineering staff had concerns with Rush Homes' initial layout for this project, because it had proposed that Pinehurst Street be the only access, and we met with the petitioner and their engineer to discuss other means of accessing the site, and that concept plan was amended to show the main access from Florida Avenue. And due to those changes, one of the townhouse-style buildings has to be revised to be a quadplex, so it's four units either way. They will be amending that proffer to include the quadplex prior to our city council public hearing. Planning Commission recommended approval of the petition at their meeting on July 9th, and this will return for a city council public hearing on August 13th.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any questions or comments from council?
That's today. The planning commission met today.
I'm sorry. It should be June 26th, I believe.
Thank you.
Not today. Dr. Wilder?
They did meet with the residents of the neighborhood. There may be a few people show up, so I appreciate that, and the Rush Homes have been doing an amazing job, but the other in the Florida Avenue, with the, I think, Florida Terrace, it's a beautiful development. I've got a lot of positive comments about that development as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. City of Lynchburg and Griffin Pipe Products Co., LLC Parking and Ingress/Egress Easement. This item will appear for council for action on September 24th, 2024. Mr. Tim Mitchell.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is related to the Blackwater CSO Tunnel project, and the purpose is really to fulfill the terms of the memorandum of understanding between the City of Lynchburg and Griffin Pipe Products LLC. The action is needed is to advertise for bids for an ingress/egress easement across 4 Adams Street to access the, their parking lot that we constructed as part of the project. So after the bids, we would, after we received bids, we'd conduct a public hearing, present our recommendations to city council, and proceed with the public hearing. So the, just a little bit of background, the MOU was executed November 3rd, 2023, and includes then the agreements needed to minimize impacts to US Pipe because of the tunnel project. So, there's a lot of negotiation over the last couple of years with US Pipe to allow this project to move forward. We presented the terms of the MOU to city council previously. The areas in the light, outlined in the light blue on the map have been completed. The red is where the ingress/egress easement would be, at the end of Seventh Street and into the employee parking lot that we constructed. The schedule would be to advertise, because this is a public property, we have to advertise for the easement, receive bids on the easement itself. So we would advertise in the paper and other means, August 22nd and 30th. Receive bids on September 10th and present the bids and recommendation to city council at the work session on the 24th, and then conduct the public hearing the evening of the 24th. And with that, we would recommend proceeding with advertising for bids for the easements. Be glad to answer any questions that you have relating to this.
Anyone have any questions or comments? No? Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to roll call. Dr. Wilder?
No items.
No items, okay. Councilman Donlin?
No items.
Councilman Allison?
No items.
Council missions?
No items.
Councilman Taylor?
No items.
Vice Mayor Feraldi? Wow, okay. Well, then I will say a few things. First, I wanted to make sure that with the heat, everybody is keeping themselves cool. Pay attention to our city website about the cooling centers when they're open. Make sure you're hydrating. My mom is messaging me daily about making sure me and my entire family are hydrated, so want to make sure y'all are doing that as well. Want to make sure that we're being good neighbors. If you have elderly neighbors, or especially if they live alone, check on them, make sure that they're, you know, okay. And also our pets, don't leave them outside in this heat, because they can have heat-related emergencies as well, so be good to your pets, make sure they're coming inside. Popsicles are great, probably not for pets unless they have pet popsicles, not sure, but they're also great for you to use to hydrate, and again, just be good neighbors, check on your people, take care of each other. And tonight, we're going to be highlighting, or this afternoon, I guess, our Commonwealth's Attorney's Office for the Department of the Meeting, I guess. So, the Commonwealth's Attorney Office for the City of Lynchburg is the chief prosecutorial authority for the city, responsible for the prosecution of all felonies and misdemeanors that occur within the city's boundaries. In the calendar year 2023, they opened over 2,100 files that included thousands of felony and misdemeanor charges. These charges ranged from first-degree murder, firearms offenses, robbery, and malicious wounding, to child abuse, and sexual molestation, rape, drug distribution, driving under the influence of drugs or alcohol, criminal street gang charges, and theft. These numbers do not include the hundreds of misdemeanors and traffic offenses that they prosecute on a daily basis in the Lynchburg General District Court. At any given time, they have over 200 jury trials pending in the Lynchburg Circuit Court. Around a quarter of their caseload involves cases of domestic and intimate partner violence, sexual violence, strangulation, and stalking, primarily heard in the Lynchburg Juvenile and Domestic Relations Courts. These robust caseloads are handled by a strong prosecutorial team of now 12 attorneys, thanks to the investment by this Lynchburg City Council and the city manager into the personnel needs of the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office. The prosecutors in this office would not be nearly as effective without the experienced and professional support staff, including victim-witness advocates, body worn camera specialists, legal assistants, in-house investigator, office administrator, IT officer, court finds collection specialists, and a paralegal. A great deal of gratitude goes from the Commonwealth's Attorney Office to their partner agencies, who join them in the mission of doing all they can to promote public safety and the quality of life in our community through challenging criminal activity and working toward crime prevention and rehabilitation. These partner agencies include the Department of Social Services, the Lynchburg Police Department, and the Virginia State Police, Horizon Behavioral Health, Community Corrections, Virginia Department of Corrections, Probation and Parole, Virginia Department of Health, and many more. Many of these same partners work with them in innovative alternative court dockets, such as the Lynchburg Adult Recovery Court, formerly known as Drug Court, and the Lynchburg Behavioral Health Docket. And that is all I have for us to learn tonight about our Commonwealth's Attorney Office. A lot of information people probably don't know. We will now go into closed session, consideration of a closed meeting to discuss the investment of public funds by the city where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interests of the city would be adversely affected pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A6 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. The subject of the closed session being specific to the Region 2000 Services Authority and its potential expansion. May I have a motion to go into closed meeting? Do I have a second? Ready for the discussion? Can we vote?
Yes.
Yes.
So, our missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
Mary.
Yes. Okay, we are now in closed session.